All right, I'm gonna call this work session to order. We are here today to talk about the Currituck County Pay Study Review. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our county manager.
With us this afternoon, David Hill. And he is with the Piedmont Triad Council of Governments. Yep, there we go. And the Piedmont Triad is the group that conducted our salary study. So he's here today to present some recommendations for the salary study. And our human resources director, Melissa Futral, is also here. Over the weekend, I sent you the presentation that Melissa provided last year, back in April, that reviewed some employment trends that we were seeing, which included the recommendation to fund the salary study for this fiscal year. There was also an attachment that included some updated information about turnover. It's interesting, we're seeing similar trends to where we were last year. And then there was also an attachment that included the excerpt from the budget message related to the cost of living adjustment.
Hey, I have a question before we start, if you don't mind, Ms. Manager. The second PDF, I think that was you sent it, but I guess it was, was that for just of so far in '25? This is from July to now?
That's correct. That's year-to-date.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's correct. All right. You all had also requested some information about vacancies, and I can share that with you in follow-up. But just kind of in summary, I'll hit the departments where we're still continuing to see vacancies, detention. For example, there's currently five vacancies. Within emergency medical services, there are currently seven vacancies, but we're onboarding five individuals right now. We have five vacancies in communications. We have two vacancies in planning, and then two in permits and inspections. We've got two vacancies in utilities, three in public works. We have eight in social services.
How many?
Eight. Yes, ma'am. And then we have one in a few other departments. We have two currently in the sheriff's office. But, you know, with vacancies, and it's important to remember, there's a lot of fluidity with those numbers. Like, for example, with EMS, you know, when we're able to onboard five employees at once, that's great. And we constantly get recommendations for hires, so we still are seeing some significant vacancies, so.
Did you say there's five in communications?
That's correct.
Wow.
Lots of job openings all around.
I know there's one. There's one in, is that including the one that's in training? Because there was one in training last week for dispatch. How many was the jail openings? The sheriff's office, we technically have two.
The sheriff's office, or, excuse me, detention is five.
Five, okay.
Five in detention?
Yes, ma'am.
It was 13 at one time.
All right. So I will turn it over to David. Melissa's got some information to share, she'll pop in, but we'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Rebecca. And I am David Hill with Piedmont Triad Regional Council. But more importantly, there are a group of six of us who are retired local government employees who work for Piedmont Triad Regional Council. And while PTRC's focus is those 75 local government members in the Greensboro/Winston-Salem area, the six of us work all across the state. So I'm here this evening to present to you about seven months' worth of work. And I'll go through some slides, lots of charts, graphs, all of those kinds of things that bore most people to death. And I can't say that I can make it exciting, but I'll spend as much time with each slide as I need to. I'll answer questions as we go through, but I'll look to you to lead me on that. So the expectation of these kinds of studies is to determine, first of all, a market, who are those competitors? And then, from a recruitment and retention standpoint, where, based on all the information that we've collected and analyzed, where is the best positioning for Currituck County to be better positioned as far as recruitment and retention is concerned? Just briefly, the process. We came and held employee information sessions, where each employee came and attended those sessions, for us to talk to them about what the study was, what the study was not, but more importantly, to explain to the employees the importance of their participation in the study. And their participation in the study primarily was the completion of a 12-page position description questionnaire. That was 12 pages of each employee telling us in their own words everything about their job, every element of their job. What did they do? How do they do it? How often did they do it? Just every element. There are also questions in there that are designed to capture all the physical demands and environmental conditions of each position. There are questions in there to help us determine whether or not a position is exempt or non-exempt under Fair Labor Standards Act. So there's a lot of information in those 12 pages. Employees had two weeks to work on that, and then after that, their supervisors had an additional week to review those, just to make sure that the responses we were getting truly represented everything that each employee did. I met individually with department directors, reviewed organizational charts, find out as much information as I could from the department director's standpoint about their department, the employees in their department, struggles that they have with recruitment and retention. And then, it's just a seven months' worth of collecting data from a number of sources and pulling all of that information together and being here before you this evening to present some preliminary recommendations. So as I go through, I'm going to first talk to you about what your workforce looked like at the beginning of the study. So this primarily is going to be a number of charts looking at a snapshot of the workforce as of about the first part of August. And that's important, because we draw a lot of benchmark data from that snapshot, what does the workforce truly look like? And then we derive from that a number of, we'll come up with a number of assumptions and interpretations of that data. But I first will talk to you about standard deviation, an exciting topic. But in a mature workforce, and my definition of a mature workforce is that you have an average years of employment between eight and 10 years. And in that mature workforce, and assuming that the sample size is large enough, I should be able to find about 2/3 of your employees in the middle, 1/3 of this bar graph. So in this bell curve that you're looking at, without regard to the element that we're measuring, I should be able to find about 2/3 of your employees in that middle 1/3. This also represents a salary grade range, with the minimum or entry-level salaries over on the far left, the maximum of the salary grade range on the far right, and then that middle section, again, that highest point of that bell curve, represents what's known as the market value, the market rate, for each position. Now, as I go into the next couple of slides, I have a technical inability to recreate bell curves. So my bell curves will look more like St. Louis arches. So in my first St. Louis arch, which represents a 20-year career, what you're looking at is a representation of the number of employees, and again, this is a snapshot, of about the first part of August. So this bar graph that you're looking at now represents the number of employees who were working for you at that time, who came to work for you in each of these calendar years that are represented on this chart. What this does not represent is the total number of employees who came to work for you in each of those calendar years. So the only thing represented on this first chart are the number of employees who were still working for you, who came to work in each of those calendar years. This chart also is a good representation of recruitment and retention. So if you look at those highest bars on the left side, that's a great image of recruitment. If you then look at the bars to the right side of that, then that gets into the issue of retention. And I can tell you from nothing other than historical data, that if you follow that first bar on the left, that highest bar, if you followed that over the next three to five years, it is going to look like the bars to the right. And if the longer we follow that particular bar, it eventually is going to look like some of those shorter bars. And that's just based on historical data of local governments in North Carolina. So my definition, again, of a mature workforce is an average years of employment between eight and 10 years. Yours is right at 7.4. But if you look in the bottom-left, you can see that you've got over 28% of your employees have been with you less than two years. You've got almost half of your employees who've been with you less than five years. So even though you've got an average years of employment of over seven years, you can see that you've got almost half of your employees who've been with you less than five. The next one is where I take a look at how long an employee's been in their current position. And there, the average is about four years. And again, my bell curve, St. Louis arch, represents a 20-year career. So in their current position, you've got almost half of your employees who've been in their current position for just two years, less than two years. And then you've got over 3/4 of your employees who've been in their current position, less than five years. This chart typically is a mirror of the first chart, and as you can see, most of the highest bars are on the left. And I don't, in the first bar, in the first chart, in this chart, I don't see anything that stands out that causes me concern, because of all of the studies that we do across the state, I can tell you that the bar graphs that I have just shown you regarding length of service and time in position, your two charts look just like every other local government in the state of North Carolina. So, and again, just from historical data, great job recruiting, not-so-great a job of retaining. So if I were presenting these first two charts to any other local government in the state of North Carolina this evening, their charts would look just like this. I next look at where are employees' salaries in relation to their pay grade range? Now here, there's a lot of information on this particular chart. You have an approved pay plan that's made up of 18 steps. So each pay grade has 18 steps, from minimum to maximum. And there's a 2% increment between each of those 18 steps. But you can see from this chart that most of the employees' salaries fall within about a 17% range. And more importantly, you can see that the highest bar is there that represents about 80 employees whose salaries are approximately 4% above the minimum salary of their pay grade range. And in your step system, that represents step three. An employee typically comes to work at step one. And then, Melissa, help me talk about how an employee advances from step one to step three.
Certainly. So at initial hire, you're hired in step one, that's the minimum. After six months of successful employment, you advance to step two. And then after an additional six months, at the culmination of one year of successful employment, you advance to step three, which is where the vast majority of our staff remain. Staff in select departments are able to earn incentives that could advance them further down the steps, the highest of that typically being at step nine. And that's typically with the sheriff's office. So the vast majority of our staff, we consider the standard job rate to be step three.
When we get to the end of my presentation, I will be giving you recommendations on a new pay plan. When you look at the data and you look at these bars, your average percent above minimum is less than 9%. So what that means is that the majority of your employees have a salary that is less than 9% above the minimum of their pay grade range. So if I'm a brand-new employee, I would come to work at step one. Six months later, I move to step two. 12 months after my initial employment, I move to step three. And except for certain personnel actions, I then could expect my salary to remain at step three for perhaps an indefinite period of time.
Unless you got promoted, or something like that?
Unless I got promoted.
Off-living, something.
And even if there were an adjustment of the pay grade range by a cost-of-living adjustment, I still would maintain my relative position at step three. So with that, looking down in the bottom-left, you've got 58% of your employees who have salaries that are less than 10% above minimum. So that, I could be a long-serving employee, and my salary would be less than 10% above a brand-new employee who started work today. So as we move into recommendations, we're going to talk about a new pay plan, talk about different ways of looking at how employee salaries can be adjusted and advanced across the pay grade range. One of the other things I do is I take a look at the last 10% of the workforce who came to work, and then out of that last 10%, I take a look at, first of all, what department did they go to work in? So in this chart, you can see that of the last 45 employees who came to work, now again, this is a snapshot from the 1st of August, that 11 of those 45 came to work in social services. And then the next highest grouping was detention, followed by sheriff. So here, again, I'm looking for trends, I'm looking for anything that stands out. I have to be careful when I look at the information on this in the next slide, because obviously those departments, typically social services, sheriff, are the two biggest departments in the counties, so they obviously have a greater opportunity to hire more people. So when I take a look at this, again, I'm not seeing anything that stands out or is of great concern to me. This is a typical representation of a county government. Then I take a look at that same 45 employees and take a look at what jobs did they actually come to work in? And here, you can see that the number-one position is detention officer, followed by income maintenance caseworker, and then followed by deputy sheriff. And again, there's nothing in this slide that causes me any concern, or anything that really sticks out that we should pay particular attention to. This is a typical slide that we see, again, because of sheriff and DSS and...
What's the difference between sheriff SR and, what's that, sheriff TR, TR and D?
Training.
Training.
Train, okay, got it.
SR is senior, like, that means they've got three years or more.
So they're hired with experience.
Yeah, somebody's three years.
Okay.
Compared to somebody who's...
Experienced hired versus...
Green.
What about income case, income ma...
Income maintenance caseworker.
That's DSS.
And, okay. And then we have social worker, so they're kind of broken down.
It's different jobs.
They're both in social services.
Yeah, they're both in social services.
They are the income maintenance caseworker ones.
Also, social services.
EMP is covering your basic, your advance, and your paramedic, correct?
That's just the classification of EMP. That's the basic. Each one of these is an individual, unique classification.
Got some more.
So then, who is the market? This was one of our initial conversations. Rebecca and Melissa put together a list, we took a look at that list, we put together our list, we worked through the two different lists. As you can see, the majority of these are your neighbors. These are the people that you compete against every day. Transylvania County, obviously, in the western end of the state, is not a direct competitor, but they are a county very similar in a number of areas to Currituck. So there on there, just to give us...
Is that a typo, or is Pender County supposed to be on there twice?
Yeah, there may be a lot of typos on there.
I mean, I just, and the reason why I asked was just like, if there was supposed to be like another county instead of Pender County.
Twice.
Twice.
Yeah.
That's a good list. I know it's a, that was a bone of contention the last time we did it, so that's a good list.
15 was the number, so you're right, it's Pender County.
So I got Pender on there twice.
Yes, but 15 was the number that we, we came up with a longer list at first, and then we worked together to pare it down to 15.
It's a good list.
So it's really 14 on this list? Because Pender's on there twice.
All right. If you'll just bear with me, I'll find the others.
I mean, it's not the, I was just making sure.
Well, when we get to the next slide, we'll actually...
What it is, is we have a lot of market competition up there.
And this is a lot better list than the last.
See, like, I mean, I see, and this is just me, like, Pender County's coast, Brunswick County's coast, Transi, help me out, Transylvania, the state of North Carolina, where's that? Is that near?
It's in the mountains.
A population similar or something.
Rivada, it's very similar characteristics in terms of their tourism-based economy, population, and they are also a tier-three county.
Oh, cool. I just, I didn't know where, I knew it was in North Carolina, it was one of the 100, but I didn't know where. Learn something every day.
Transylvania County has more waterfalls than any other county in the state.
TLC wrote a song about it, I think.
But then the next couple of slides, you'll see who I forgot to put on this list. So what you're going to see now are just a couple of representative classifications, and these are individual positions. And I will spend more time on the first one than I will the other ones, but this is the comparison of each of your positions to similar positions in each of the market local governments. And I will always refer to those as similar positions, because there are no two positions in the state that are exactly alike. So now we can see...
Carteret.
Who, who, who did I not put on?
Carteret.
Okay, there they are.
Down on the crystal coast.
Which is similar.
So this particular worksheet, comparison worksheet that you're looking at now, is for the position of deputy sheriff. It is for no other position, except this particular one. So everything above the blue line is the market. And what you see for each of these local governments is the column titled MIN is the minimum salary they have for the pay grade assigned to their similar position to deputy sheriff. The next column is midpoint. That actually is not the correct description, back to the bell curve, that's the highest point of the bell curve. More often than not, it's called the midpoint, but it's actually the market value of that pay grade range. Maximum, obviously, is the maximum salary for that pay grade range. The next column is the average salary that each of these local governments are paying the employees in this particular classification. And then, I next measure the range. The range is just taking a look at the salary grade range, and how far is the maximum salary from the minimum salary. So you can see in Brunswick County, they've got a range of 70%, Camden County, 24%. That's an individual local government decision of where they want to place their range. The column titled CR stands for comp ratio. That's a salary administration term that takes a look at where is my salary in relation to the midpoint? And again, the midpoint is the market value. So said differently, where is my salary in relation to the market value of that salary grade range? And that midpoint typically is where you would find the salary of an employee who's been in their position for that eight-to-10-year period that I talked about earlier. Percent greater than minimum is just a different way of taking a look at where is the salary in relation to the minimum of the pay grade range. So that just gives me two different ways of looking at a salary. The comp ratio, where is my salary in relation to the midpoint? Percent above minimum is where is my salary in relation to the minimum of my pay grade range?
I got a question, quick question.
Yes.
I know, like, Kill Devil Hills, they have a sheriff, but they also have a police department. How are the two, do we have an idea of how the two salaries compare between their sheriff's pay and their police housing?
You're talking about Kill Devil Hills?
Yeah. Dare County's the fourth one.
So Dare County is the sheriff's department?
Okay, so, okay, that's the sheriffs. Because they had deputy sheriff here, I thought it was just all sheriff departments. So when you say Kill Devil Hills, that's not the sheriff's department, that's?
Police officer.
Police, okay. I thought everything here was listed sheriffs, okay.
Which, like, we don't have police officers in Currituck County, because we don't have municipalities.
No, I was just looking at Yellington deputy sheriff, I just figured all those were sheriff's salaries, okay.
So is the maximum, the column that's labeled maximum, is that, you've got Currituck County at $61,297, that's the maximum amount a deputy sheriff can earn in North, in Currituck County?
That's the maximum for your current salary grade range.
So that wouldn't be if they were like a corporal, or if they were a sergeant or a lieutenant?
That's not without, that's not rank, that's...
That's just...
No, this is for, this is for this one only, this is for this deputy sheriff. This is not for corporal, this is not for sergeant.
Right, so this is just, if someone is just a deputy sheriff, a deputy sheriff, the maximum they can earn is $61,297?
Correct.
They would have to be promoted to corporal or another title to increase that amount, right?
Or, or you increase the pay grade range through a cost-of-living adjustment.
Okay. But as far as salary maximum, that's not going to change unless they change jobs, right? That's, they've topped out, is what you're saying there?
Correct.
Okay. But we have people working in the sheriff's department as a deputy that makes more than $61,000?
No.
That's the maximum?
It could be a sergeant or something, making more.
Making more, that would be like the max for somebody, like, if they were topped out, far as, for all the pay scales, their base salary, correct?
I don't follow. I think...
So basically, where there's...
The distinction is, is that we have multiple positions within the sheriff's office. This is looking specifically at deputy sheriff. So the next position up is, I'd have to pull up the...
Would be like a corporal or detective, too, or something like that?
Yes, there's a senior deputy position, thank you, Melissa, there's, that's correct, there's corporal position, there's sergeant, there's lieutenant. So there are opportunities for advancements, but those are different positions.
So like, the senior deputy compared to like a regular, if I'm a deputy and two years in, the senior deputy is 4% higher than a guy with... years in, the senior deputy is four percent higher than a guy with two years in? I believe it's, how are, I'm looking at the current pay study, senior deputy compared to a, just a regular certified.
But this is just a regular deputy, right?
It's two, yeah, that's a regular deputy, so if somebody's been here three years and they're just still a regular deputy, the senior deputy is one pay grade, it's two percent more.
But that's not being compared in this chart.
No, no, this, this is comparing this position to equivalent positions in other jurisdictions.
Right.
We probably have, we probably have twenty, yeah, we probably have twenty guys, one position in that, probably.
All right, so e- every one, every one of your unique positions in each department has a worksheet like this. So the sheriff has a worksheet, looks just like this. Manager has a sheet that looks just like this. This is only for the position of deputy sheriff, that, that entry level of the, of their career ladder, that's that entry level.
Zero to three years certified.
All right, so everything above the blue line is the market. So immediately below the blue line, you can see that Currituck, for this particular position, has it in grade ten-sixty-nine. With a minimum salary of fifty-two-three-one-six, the maximum of sixty-one-two-nine-seven, and you can see immediately to the right of the sixty-one-two-nine-seven that the average salary for a deputy sheriff is fifty-two thousand, three hundred. So if you follow that line further to the right, you can see under a percent above minimum that the average deputy sheriff salary here is point oh seven percent above minimum. And again, this is a snapshot at the very beginning of the study. Immediately below that percent above minimum, you can see that the average salary for these similar positions is thirteen percent above minimum. So while your salary for a deputy sheriff is less than one percent, less than half percent, the average of the market is thirteen percent. But if you look at the line immediately below the bold Currituck line, under the minimum column, you can see that your deputy sheriff classification actually is in a pay grade range with a minimum salary of three point three percent greater than the average of the market. So that's good news. You've got, this particular position is, uh, two, two thousand dollars, almost two thousand dollars greater than the average of the market. But then you come under, or come over under the column titled actual, and you can see that your average salary for a deputy is that fifty-two thousand, three hundred. The average of the market is fifty-seven thousand dollars. So you can see in the far bottom right of this page that the average salary of a deputy sheriff here is eight and a half percent below the average of this identified market. The pay grade range actually is in a good position. You're three point three percent greater than the average of the market. But over on the actual salary side, you're eight and a half percent below the average of a, of the salary.
Oh, in the Chesapeake, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, the actual, and those three blocks? Is that still?
Virginia has strange rules about public information. They will share with us the pay grade ranges, which you see here. They will not share individual employee salaries. So that's why you don't see salary showing up for those three Virginia local governments.
Now, were they compared as just police officer and sheriff, or just police officer?
Police officer.
This, this is comparing to that similar position in a local government, whether it's a deputy sheriff or a police officer.
All right.
So then when I take a look at all of this information, I'm taking a look at two things. I'm taking, I'm taking a look at the position, and then I'm taking a look at individual salaries. When I take a look at the position without regard to individual employees, then, again, your, your current grade range is three point three percent above the average of the market. If you look at the grayscale three percent column, the mar- the information above the blue line is current local government information. In that grayscale column, I'm projecting that this identified market data is going to increase three percent at the beginning of the next fiscal year. So where the average salary, beginning salary for a deputy sheriff in this market is fifty thousand, six-four-nine, if I project a three percent increase in that, that's going to move it up to fifty-two-one-six-nine. Now again, your current salary minimum is fifty-two-three, so even looking at a three percent adjustment to the market data, you're still going to be in a, in a good position. So my recommendation for this particular position is that we leave it in the same pay grade. Now, that does not address individual employee salaries, that's just looking at the position. As we get further into the presentation, I'll talk about individual employee salaries. Now, I'm not going to take as much time on the next couple of slides. But they, they're just representations of different positions across the county. Next one is social worker two. So you can see again, looking at the pay grade range, you're about seven tenths of a percent greater than the average of the market. And even if I project a three percent increase in the market, that's going to put it up over fifty-one. My recommendation actually for this position is to move it to a, a, a grade that's going to move it up to about fifty-two-four. And that's based not only on the market data, but also internal relationships to the other social worker positions within DSS. So this is just looking at social worker one. When I take a look at social worker one, two, three, and then the supervisory positions above that, the state requires a certain relationship of those positions to each other. So here you're looking at a social worker two, and you're saying, well, okay, it's okay at a, a minimum salary of forty-nine-eight, why am I moving it to fifty-two-four? That's a combination of the market data plus the relationship that the social worker two has to the social worker one, the social worker three, and the supervisory classifications above that. Now, when you look at actual salary, again, you can see that the actual position is pretty well competitive to the market, but when you look at the actual salary, you can see that the average salary for a social worker two here is thirteen percent below the identified market. Firefighter, EMT. So when I take a look at that, and I'm looking at the position, then you can see that you're about ten percent above the market for the position. Moving over to the employee side of the graph, you can see that the average salary for a fighter, firefighter, EMT here is over ten percent less than the equivalent or similar positions in the market. My recommendation here is that that position moves from a minimum of forty-six up to a minimum of the fifty-two-four-nine-seven that you see. And again, that's a combination of the market comparisons, projection of a three percent increase in the market, and comparison to other positions in the fire department. Telecommunicator. Uh, Rebecca talked about vacancies in that particular classification. So here you can see that the actual classification of telecommunicator one is, again, over ten percent below the average of the market. Salary is not as far off as some of the others that we've looked at so far, but the salary is about three percent below. So the position itself needs to be adjusted from a, a thirty-nine-four minimum salary up to a position or a, a pay grade range with a minimum of about forty-five thousand. So those were just representations of some random positions. E- each one of your positions has a worksheet similar to the ones that we just looked at. And, and every position, uh, as I said, the sheriff, manager, HR director, firefighter, EMT, ev- every position has a comparison to those similar positions in those other local governments. And it was from those comparisons, based on internal relationships, based on that component of a three percent adjustment to the market, is where I came up with my recommendations on what pay grade each position should be assigned to. Now, your current pay grades. You've got a pay grade range or a pay plan that every employee other than sworn law enforcement officers is administered under. And then you have a separate pay plan where law enforcement officers are administered. We'll take a look at both of those. This is the pay grade or pay plan where everybody except sworn officers are administered. So in your current pay plan, you have sixty-six grades. And for the most part, that range that employees have salaries administered is about seventeen percent. And there's, there's that two percent differential from one grade to the next, except in certain sections, and you can see down at the bottom of this one, that the, the differential becomes two point five percent. And actually, grade seventy is only point one-one percent greater than grade sixty-nine.
Would that pay, just out of curiosity, would that max pay, um, include longevity, or is that just the base salary?
Uh, this is just the salary range.
Just the base salary?
Base salary.
Okay, thank you.
When you say sixty-six grades.
Right, I came.
I came from civil service where there's, you know, there, there's essentially twelve or thirteen, I guess, and then it goes into SS's, or, are you, so is this sixty-six individual, like, salary ranges?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you actually have much more than that.
Can I, can I ask why?
Well, there's different things for like years, like if you've been here, you're like, there's different steps and there's.
Okay, so it's like GS twelve, step three? Okay, okay.
So this does not include the supplement or the county's contribution to the employees' 401K?
Just the base salary.
Yeah, this, this is just looking at positions.
Okay.
Individual employee salaries are, are, are not part of the discussion at this point. So this is just taking a look at individual positions, deputy sheriff.
Okay.
And determining in the market, where is that pay grade range that that position should be? So in your general pay plan, my recommendation actually is a, a, a much greater reduction of the number of pay grades that you have. So when you went back and took a look at those ranges from each of those worksheets, you can see here for telecommunicator, the average range is fifty-four percent. If you looked at firefighter, forty-nine point six percent, social worker, fifty-one point three, seven percent. So all of them are in that neighborhood of fifty percent. So in addition to that grade range, so you're basically administering employees in a grade range that's about seventeen percent. The average grade range of the market is fifty percent. Your differential from one grade to the next is two percent. The average differential in the market is five point four percent. So you've got a couple of things that are working against you here. You've got a pay grade range that for the most part is confined to a seventeen percent range. So even if I'm at the maximum of that seventeen percent, I'm not even at the midpoint of the average local government in this area. The average local government range is fifty percent. Your administered grade range is about seventeen percent. So again, even if my salary is at that step.
Eighteen?
I'm, I'm, I'm not even to the midpoint of everybody else's pay grade range. In addition, your differential from one grade to the next is two percent. The differential in the market is five percent. So if I'm going to be promoted to the next rung of my career ladder, the level of duties, responsibilities and authorities should be great enough to, to have a five percent differential. A two percent differential, I could come to work here as a social worker one, be promoted to a social worker two, and for the most part, I've advanced two percent. If I'm a social worker two somewhere else, or if I'm a social worker one somewhere else, I get moved to a social worker two, that's a five percent movement. So the levels of duties, responsibilities and authorities from one position to another in that salary grade hierarchy should be enough to support a five percent. And again, that's pretty much the average of this market. A range of fifty percent, a differential of five point four. When we get to my recommended pay plan, I'm going to recommend a fifty percent range and a five percent differential.
I have a question. When we're looking at these comparisons to the markets, I know there's a lot of, most of our positions here cross over to other counties, like social worker, does it mean there's not a whole lot of opportunities outside local government? But we have, then we have the other, um, like in public works or something like that, where there's another market segment, that's the outside market, the private sector. Do we have a comparison, like electrician? I know you can compare it to other electricians of the counties, but how does that compare now to the, do we, do we have comparisons? Have you looked at that to where? We have looked at that, okay.
I did not include that.
Okay.
I only included.
Because that, that would be another market out there that we're competing against.
Yes.
Yeah.
And for positions like electrician and some of those kinds of positions, if I included the private sector data.
It'd be, I'd be, I mean, it'd be.
The difference would be.
Yeah, way too big, right.
Much greater. And then here's, here's the pay plan that the, the sworn officers are administered under, and there's eighteen of those. And again, you've got that seventeen percent, but within the sworn officer classifications, there is, and again, Melissa, help me with this explanation, there is that opportunity for sworn officers to get further outside of that seventeen percent range. So you do have some law enforcement officers and some other very long-serving employees whose salaries truly are near the maximum of that forty percent range, that eighteen step range that we talked about at the very beginning. But for the most part, most employees to include law enforcement are administered in that seventeen percent range. And again, looking at the law enforcement, you're still two percent differential from one, one grade to the next, and again, the market is. And again, the market is in that 50% range, 5% differential. So where you now have two different pay plans, and if you compare the plan for law enforcement officers to all other employees, there's not a significant difference. They're all the same ranges, they're all the same differentials, the salary numbers are not that significantly different. My recommendation is that you administer all employees under the same pay plan. So this is my proposed pay plan, and as I said, you can look at that and see that the range is a standard 50%. So that means that the maximum salary is 50% greater than the minimum. And the differential, and here's where we had to make some incremental adjustments in your pay plan compared to where it is now, compared to where the market is. My recommendation is to move from your current 2% differential from one grade to the next to a 3% differential. And this is just the first step in ultimately getting to that 5% differential. When we get to the last slide where you see the implementation cost, you will have a better understanding of why I'm recommending a 3% differential rather than a 5%. So again, under a 5% differential, if I'm a social worker one, move to a social worker two, that's that 5% differential. With my recommendation, a social worker one moving to a social worker two becomes a 3% differential. And again, when we get to the last slide, you can see what the implementation cost estimate is going to be. If I went ahead and went and recommended the 5% differential now, that implementation cost would be almost double the number that you will see in a little while. So the recommendations is consideration to adopt that recommended pay plan. And then second, to then adopt the salary grade assignment for each position that's supported by the market comparisons. And then here, third bullet is where we get into, okay, if we're going to do all of that for these positions, what then do we need to take a look at as far as employee salaries are concerned? So my recommendation to you tonight, and I can tell you that we looked at a number of implementation options, implementation strategies. Each one of those took into consideration an employee's service time. How long have they been working here? How long have they been in their current position? My recommendation to you this evening is to consider the recommendation that's based on an employee's time in position. And it's going to be based on a model that will get employee salaries under a comp ratio modeling of moving employee salaries to the midpoint or that market value of their pay grade range in their eighth year of employment. But again, comp ratio is just that salary administration component where you're looking at the market, you're determining what is the market rate? What is the average salary of an employee who's been in their position eight to 10 years? And then the comp ratio modeling sets up a mechanism where an employee's salary has a value across the pay grade range to where they get to the midpoint in the eighth year. And this slide just gives a representation of what that looks like. Over on the left side is that comp ratio model that assigns a value. And that value is just a point in the pay grade range. So based on my time in position, what is the value of that along my pay grade range? So then if I took that comp ratio modeling over on the left side and just turned it on its side and laid it underneath our bell curve, you can see that if I'm a brand-new employee, the value of my time in position is going to be at the minimum of that pay grade range. And then the longer I'm in my position, I then have a value or a relative position across my pay grade range to where I reach midpoint in the eighth year of my time in position.
Just out of curiosity, do we happen to have, like, what are current, what is our average time in position across the county?
That was one of the first slides.
Oh, sorry.
Seven point four years.
It's about a little over four years.
Will we get this slide?
Yes. Your average length of employment is a little less than eight years. Time in position was just a little bit greater than four years. So now.
You want a drum roll? Okay.
Yeah, you can.
You can take that slide back.
Yeah.
Oh, golly.
Now, remember, this is not taking your pay, my proposed pay plan to a 5% differential. Again, if I went to the 5%, the numbers you would see would be almost doubled. So my recommended pay plan is just a 3% differential, but that would be the first step in a gradual movement to the 5%.
What's the delta in what we pay now?
Like, what is? He's saying that's how much it's off across the board for everything.
I understand that, but, I mean, how much more is this? What's the delta between current and this?
That represents, so that's the percentage increase.
This is the amount of increase that would be, what's your book and.
And that's, that 1.3 is.
On top of what we're paying now, so we have to implement this new plan, we have to come up with another $1.7 million.
But this doesn't take into consideration all that the employees are getting as far as the supplement and the contribution non-matched to the 401K.
Everybody gets that.
Well, so.
All the other local governments do that?
Well, I'll let David maybe continue and explain. So the two, what the 26.5% covers in terms of the benefits package that our employees receive. So yes, we do offer the longevity program that starts after five years of employment. And then we offer, we do currently offer a 401K contribution that does not require a match. So we are, as part of this, going to recommend some additional things, a cap to the 401K at 5% is going to be our recommendation. Right now, we're at seven, or excuse me, 6.39%.
It is 6.3. I thought it was five.
No, no. But we've gone through and evaluated what our surrounding counties are utilizing, and 5% is kind of the industry standard right now. So we feel that that is a good number. We're also looking at, and might be getting ahead here, but one of the things that we really struggled with was how to bring our existing employees from the current pay plan to the recommended pay plan without compromising longevity and how we are going to kind of roll longevity and incentives into the new pay plan.
So longevity would not be separate, it would be rolled into a salary moving forward based on time in position?
That's correct. It would change, so we would still have longevity as a concept, it would change the application.
Right.
So it would be rolled into the salary? Yes, yes. It would become part of the bell curve, if you will, part of the range for the salary.
Right now, it's a percentage.
That's correct.
Okay.
On top of base, that's correct.
That is something that used to be that way with the schools, and it was really going to break them.
And they had to do like a set amount of money, if you work this many years to this many years.
It was this many dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I guess because they had a lot of mature employees that were up there.
That happened.
You got to go into the benefits now to this, is that correct?
Well, I don't know if David can speak necessarily to the benefit. If you like more information about the benefits, Melissa can certainly speak to that. So I think what this is showing here with the benefits is that the additional cost to implement this recommendation will require an additional $367,000 that would be applied to the benefits portion.
Okay.
Right. So the total implementation cost is 1.7 million. The impact to salaries would be the 1.386. And again, you know, as this statement down at the bottom, that's across all the funds. So not all of our employees are paid out of the operating fund, for example. We have employees that are paid out of Fund 15, which is the tourism development fund. We have employees that are paid out of the enterprise funds. So this is not the impact to just the operating budget, although the vast majority of it is.
What'd you say, what, 70% of it probably is 80%? I just, I just.
Yeah.
Probably at least two-thirds.
Yeah, at least two-thirds.
Well, that's probably accurate, about two-thirds.
Does this include positions for which we are refunded, reimbursed from the state?
So this includes all of the positions that we currently have? So the revenue from that, you wouldn't see that here as an offset?
Okay.
What you're seeing in these numbers is the gross adjustments. So what you're not seeing here are those reimbursements that you would get.
Okay.
The 367,000 part of this is, as Rebecca was saying, is basically the payroll associated cost. That's FICA, that's retirement, the 401K, which is a little, about 27%. So the $367,000 is those payroll associated costs.
Okay.
And part of that, don't forget, is contribution that we're required to make to local government And our employees also are required to make a contribution to that as well. That's mandatory. That's 6%.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else have other questions? Anything else to add?
Is it true?
Well, thank you.
We're going to get a copy, is what she said.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. A lot to think about and a lot to ponder.
And I will add too, it's, you know, Melissa, I give Melissa a lot of credit here. She's spent a lot of time combing through, and she's had to look at individual salaries as we've been trying to figure out which option we'll be able to implement. So I just wanted to publicly thank her for all her hard work on this. But it's also, it's going to be difficult until we know the path forward to share with our employees what the potential impact to their salary could be. Because remember, we're going, not only are we going out, but we're also going up. And when we're looking at moving from the current pay plan to the new pay plan, it's a much more personalized approach to salaries. Because, you know, as David was explaining before, you may have someone in a position that's been in that position for three years, and they're at step three. And then they have someone else who comes in, and they've just been with us for a year. So they also move to step three. So you're not recognizing necessarily that someone has more experience than the newer employee. So this approach gives us far more flexibility. It also would give us the flexibility, let's say, we were advertising for a position and someone came in and they had a lot of experience. Well, in the past, I've been able to put them at step three if we feel like they meet the requirements for the job. Whereas now, if we have the much larger range and someone comes in, we could say, the department head could recommend that they come in and they're paid at market rate, and we would be able to do that. We've lost good candidates because we haven't had any flexibility in our pay structure.
A lot.
When, after the details are worked out, when do you see, what's the timeline for implementation?
Well, we would start at the beginning of next fiscal year. I mean, if you all were willing to fund it and go.
This is for fiscal year '25, '26?
Fiscal year '26, yes, that's correct, yes.
And I take it that this change we're talking about with the way, like, you can pay people more, that is going to cost us more to implement it this way than if we kept with the old way?
Yes. But the goal, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Payment, I mean, interrupt you, but the goal, again, is to bring our salaries to market rate because, because we are, we were, and we continue to struggle with recruitment and retention. And, you know, the data doesn't lie. We have folks that are not staying with us until five years, so they're not vested in longevity, they're just not staying.
I thought, didn't we get a good raise last year? I mean, I'm surprised that we're below market.
I really am.
Didn't we get a raise last year?
Everybody pays. I mean, like, the other day, Dispatch had a class last week where nine people were in this class, there were nine new hires at Dispatch, and it was in the BLT program, not in the same, but they were using one of their rooms. So I walked in there out of curiosity and said, how many of you guys are being employed by Currytuck? I figured we would have had two or three. We had one. Pasco Tank had like three. And I was like, how are these places having more, like, this is a better place to work benefits-wise and whatever, but like, I mean, the numbers are the numbers, they don't, you know what I'm saying? We're below. So we're lucky that we got what we got, is how I look at it.
Well, if I may just add one little piece. So you may have recalled.
Come closer to the microphone.
Oh, sure.
This is being recorded.
So you might recall that there was a salary study done previously. I think that ended, as I was beginning here, about three years ago. And that was done over a three-year time span where we reviewed the bottom grades, and then the middle grades, and then the top grades. During that time, so we addressed the bottom grades, and then they were held constant for the remaining two years. During that three-year salary study implementation, there were no cost of living adjustments given, right? So that salary grade range was stagnant during those three years when the neighboring counties around us were doing cost of living adjustments. So essentially, last year, when we did the 864 impact to the salaries, that was to catch up, in essence, for the three years that everybody else was doing a 2 to a 4, 5% increase. So in last year, again, that was a very conservative approach to try to rebalance the three years that we were off. And so that's what we said last year, that this will kind of bring us, we're bridging the gap, but it's not going to bring us to where we really need to be. And so I think that was where we kind of got off schedule, essentially, was during those three years when that salary study kind of rolled out.
And we, you did that in three parts so that it wouldn't hurt all at once. So I understood that, but I really thought, I'm surprised that we're below.
Melissa, thank you for your work on this, too. We really appreciate it, and thank you for your presentation. Anything else to add?
I just want to say again, and just because we're looking to implement the salary study does not mean necessarily that every individual employee will see an increase at pay. There will be employees who are at market, so they will not see a change in pay, and then others will. So just wanted to make that distinction as well.
All right, we will stand in recess before our meeting. Thank you again.
Love your information, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the March 3rd, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. At 4:30 today, we heard a presentation on our, uh, salary study. And, uh, that information was recorded and will be available on the website. So I want to thank the staff for the presentation. Our first order of, well, first of all, you may notice that we are down two commissioners tonight. Uh, our condolences go to the O'Neill family on the passing of his mother. Uh, our prayers and thoughts are with him and his family. Uh, and then Commissioner Owen Etheridge is taking some much-needed family time, uh, to celebrate 10 years of marriage. So, uh, I will now call, uh, Pastor Eric Fretz of Bridge Church to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we. Give them vision and wisdom from heaven for all the great plans that you have for the future of this awesome county. I bless the leadership here. May their marriages be blessed, their children, their households be blessed, and every decision they make be guided by the providential hand of the Lord. Amen. Now would you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Fretz. Um, next is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder. Um, I will turn that over to our county attorney, Ms. Morgan.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes that need to be made?
Madam Chair, uh, I would like to, uh, make a motion to remove the closed session from the meeting agenda and then approve as amended.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second, I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next is public comment. Uh, this is a time where we allow you to come and voice your concerns, uh, and, and your points. I would ask that when you come to the podium, that first you state your name and address. Uh, and then I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. We do have quite a few signed up tonight. Uh, there is a light, uh, system there. Uh, when you have 30 seconds left, you will see the yellow light. And when the red light comes on, I would ask that you please conclude your, uh, statements at that time. Uh, the first person I have signed up is Kyle Rust.
County, but the matter is related to Currituck. So I'm the president of a Currituck Ruotin Club, one of the six in Zone 1. And my club came up with an idea to bring the Ruotin Clubs in Zone 1 closer together. It's a chili cook-off. It will be locate, uh, located, undetermined, um, currently working on that. The date will most likely be April 12th. It could be April 5th, but it's leaning more towards April 12th. And the reason I'm here tonight is I would like a commissioner to be one of the judges for the chili cook-off. Um, I will be sending a follow-up email within the coming weeks, um, to hopefully secure one of you guys to be a judge.
As a side note, I may be biased, I'm a member of the Notz Island Ruotin Club.
Well, you have a conflict of interest there.
I thought about it after I raised my hand.
And one thing, can I say one thing too, for his, if he was considering on the 5th, there is something big here in the county on the 5th.
And that, that's leaning towards the 12th. I, yeah, I have heard that.
Okay, well, send us that follow-up email. Hopefully someone can oblige.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Is that, just real quick, that I, what, what district is that for the Ruotins? Well, the guy, is it part of the Holland, Holland Ruotin District?
I don't, I, the six, um, clubs within the Zone 1 is not one of, it's not Notz Island.
Yeah, Notz Island falls under the, we got a bunch of Virginia, we're in with a bunch of Virginia Ruotins.
Oh, yeah, no, this would be North Carolina, so, uh.
Reach out to the Notz Island Ruotins if you want, I'll give you contact info for them. I'm happy to kind of set you up at least then, you know?
Well, it, it's, it's specifically for, for the six Zone 1.
Okay, all right.
Uh, the, the big goal is to have a big chili cook-off in the fall, closer to November, but this is kind of a small localized social gathering for the six Zone 1 Ruotin Clubs.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next person I have signed up is Todd Mitchell.
Good evening. My name's Todd Mitchell. I live at 108 Chapman Lane. Thank you for allowing me to sit here and speak. I want to start off with some good news, is that Currituck Fire and EMS at the VFA Board meeting, they agreed to have the volunteers purchase the $300,000 of turnout gear, so it looks like we're gonna save about $36,000 for our citizens by that. Hopefully, there's some other things that are coming down the pipe. We can do that same process and try to save our citizens. However, tonight, I'd like to, secondly, talk about the TRC Committee. So our TRC Committee, I'm sure you guys are aware of, but the citizens are, this is our technical review committee. This is where any plans that go before the city for development, they go to this committee first. There are members of the board, the county, that have a chance to speak on comments for or against such developments. Um, I've done some research, um, we spoke about it a little bit at the VFA Board meeting, that our fire chief writes no comments on every single development that comes before the TRC. Those comments section is where he can go and talk about limited resources, limited staffing, those types of things. And what that allows is for that committee to take those things into knowledge and say, you know what, maybe we're not ready for this development yet. And it gives us, I believe it's a two-year grace period to get those things where it needs to be, and that developer can come back and at that time develop them. Um, it blows my mind that our fire chief doesn't make any comment. We don't even want to talk about the volunteer side. Uh, we realized at the meeting that most of the volunteer fire chiefs didn't even know they could make a comment in this section. It's more of the EMS side. You know, we have five medics, right? And here tonight, I have the SOGs for Currituck Fire, Currituck County Fire and EMS. In their plan, when they're short-staffed, they immediately take medic two out of service, right now, right here, right then. And then they take other medics in the county and they move them to different areas, which is standard. But as citizens, that increases response time, that delay could mean the life and death of citizens of our county. And this is why I want to try to tie it back, is why aren't we making those comments when we're doing these things in SOGs already, making those types of comments, saying, hey, we're not ready for this development yet? We need some more resources, we need some more staffing, we need these things so that we can better give this to our citizens. And lastly, I'm not gonna have time, because I got 20 seconds, but the county writes the contracts that the volunteers sign, that they have to provide. Another proof that our fire chief is not working with our volunteers is, two of your three volunteer companies use what's called a Method 3 water shuttle technique. It reduces the amount of money our citizens pay in those jurisdictions on their homeowner's insurance. I've noticed, do you want me to stop or do you want me to keep going?
Finish your, finish your thought, then come back again and.
I noticed one of your legislative things we're gonna push this year is monitoring the amount of insurance that our county people are paying. There is one volunteer company that refuses to do it. Right now, they could be saving some citizens in their district money. And my question is, why isn't our fire chief working with that volunteer company to get them the resources to get that? We can talk about the satellite stations later on down the road, but there are citizens right now with a simple change of how we do tactics. They could be saving $400 to $500 a year in their homeowner's insurance. That's a big deal. And I plan to continue to work with, uh, Commissioner McCord through the VFA Board to work on trying to make these improvements so we can get citizens a reduction in money, the coverage they need, and those types of things. Thank you for letting me go over a little bit. I really appreciate your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the next person I have signed up is Joseph F. Hobbs.
Good evening. Back again for the third time in two years and, um, good to see some new faces on the board. Again, my name is Joseph F. Hobbs, 278 Northwest Backwoods Road, Moayak. And again, my subject tonight is what can we do, or can be done to improve the ISO rating in the Northwest community of Moayak Township? On 4/17/2023, a group of Northwest community citizens, as well as myself, addressed the past Board of Commissioners concerning the need to improve the ISO rating in the Northwest community of Moayak. About a year or so later, on 3/18/2024, the past BOC was again informed about the need to improve the ISO rating in this area, along with a petition signed by citizens living in the Northwest area. Unfortunately, the past board, uh, I didn't get any response, or, uh, any other citizens got any response from the two meetings. Also, a group of Northwest citizens, along with myself, attended a Fire and EMS Advisory Board meeting on 9/25/2023 to again voice our concerns about high ISO fire ratings, which are the worst in the county, with a rating of 10. Again, no action was taken or explored by the county board. The reasons why Northwest community of Moayak has such a bad rating is because of the following. Number one, the community is located over five miles from the closest fire station, which is the current Moayak Fire Station. And number two, no public water or hydrants exist. Our homeowner's insurance premiums are the highest in the county due to the lack of infrastructure, which in turn is a threat to Northwest citizens' public health and safety. Other communities in Moayak Township have a ISO rating of five or more due to, due to residents are located within five miles of the current Moayak Fire Station and have access to fire hydrants and the public water system. A second fire station for Moayak, um, is in the planning stages, I've heard. And should be located within five miles of all Northwest community residents to provide and create and reserve and deserve adequate fire protection and EMS service, which will in turn lower our ISO rating within the community and lower homeowner insurance premium cost. Note, uh, currently, there's a new subdivision being developed off of Northwest Backwoods Road. The name of that subdivision is Backwoods Farm. Some of you don't even know about it because it's a 20-plus lot subdivision with 10-acre lots, which meets the state rule that says you don't have to deal with a plant in the zone or whatever. Unfortunately, a lot of the, uh, future homeowners are gonna have no clue about the expense that it's gonna cost for homeowner's insurance due to the high ISO ratings in our area and due to the lack of infrastructure, as I have discussed. In conclusion, the time has come for Currituck County officials to take a closer look at the Northwest community of Moayak Township and its growth. A new fire station is needed immediately to provide proper fire protection and EMS services. When can we have a public meeting with the citizens of this community and county officials? This area of the county has never asked for a whole lot. We have no parks or boat ramps. This community needs your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I'd like to give this to the secretary. Again, this is a copy of the petition that was given last year, uh, from the citizens of the community of Northwest. Also, just real good information, if you could somehow. I really appreciate it. Get to all the board members and the county members, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Hopefully, we can have a meeting or session soon to discuss these issues.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person I have signed up is Charles Head. Mr. Head? Okay.
Good evening, I'm Charles Head. I live on, uh, 351 Northwest Backwoods Road. I came up with, uh, Mr. Hobbs and some of our, our other neighbors. What the first gentleman said about the, the insurance, he's, he's correct, other than the amount. We, uh, most of us, our homeowner's insurance has quadrupled. Um, in the past four years since I've been, been there, my homeowner's insurance went from $2,000 a year to five. So, and then I learned tonight that it's also been zoned as a, as a flood zone. And I don't think it's ever flooded since I've lived there, and there's been several, several other folks that's been there way longer than me, and it's never flooded as, never flooded either. So, um, that was all I had. Uh, I, Joe said most of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Um, the next person I have signed up is Crystal Neer.
I didn't realize I was gonna have to speak, so they've said it all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Sherry Robbins?
It's the same, I'm on Northwest Backwoods Road.
All right. Thank you for coming out tonight. And then the last person I have signed up is Lauren Birch.
Y'all want one of these? I promise I'm not going through this. Yeah, that's okay.
Ms. Chairman, now, Lo, is she, were you here speaking for the one? I know there's an item coming up on the, the waterways.
All by myself.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Okay, go ahead, Lauren.
All right, um, my name is Lauren Birch and I live at 117 Alex Lane in Moayak, North Carolina. Um, so the packet I just handed you is a resolution from Hyde County and then a resolution from Terrell County. Hopefully, um, Dare County is getting ready to get one of these, and we've got other market participants that are distributing through and throughout the coastal counties. There's a review report from, a statistician from Duke reviewing the blue crab stock model. And then there's the Division of Marine Fisheries recommendations, and then the economic profile of the fishing counties, just so y'all didn't have to look it up, here it is. The main thing is the review. Uh, it was reviewed and it was found that, um, it's unrealistic. They said that the fishing mortality was 90%. So that means all of the blue crabs, 90% of them are gone. Our landings have become, are at, are, I'm sorry, have remained stable and, um, really to the contrary. So they got a review, they said this is, you did a good job, you tried hard, but it doesn't work. Do not, they strongly recommend that there's no, um, management measures taken for this. Do not, they strongly recommend that there's no management measures taken for this. Well, Marine Fisheries came out, and they said that we're going to close the female market for five months and limit it to 10 bushels of female crabs. We were trying to get ahead of this before it gets all the way, and pretty much, we're looking at, North Carolina has a total of $59 million in just the hard crab economic impact, with Currituck averaging between 1.3 million and 3.6 million. It's part of our heritage, it's part of our advertising with our tourism. Our state actually had that as number three of six activities to do in Currituck County. So, but what we can say is that we have had a 45% loss in jobs, whether that be regulation or just culture or what. There's, we know that we are losing. So, pretty much, we're asking you guys to stand with the fishermen, neighboring counties that are harder hit by this potential management plan, and lovers of fresh seafood. I know it hurts my heart to go to Food Line and see foreign seafood everywhere when we live in a great place. If you can pass a resolution similar to the two in front of you, I'd be happy to help draft one if you need it, but pretty much, we're just asking that you say, hey, we're watching, please get your numbers right, and then do adaptive measurements.
Lauren, is there a digital copy of these that you could send to our clerks so we could look it over and craft it as we need it?
No problem. And I also have, like, full excerpts. It was like 150 pages, and I did not want to hand y'all.
Thank you for that.
That document, so I would be happy to send whatever you need.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment? Sure. Lauren.
Mr. O'Neill, Chairman, and I had talked about this soon after coming on the board.
Yes.
And he and I talked just last week about establishing a committee and with fishermen on it to be on top of things like this and help in any way we can, so.
We would love it, and we're getting a network, please let us help you, let's collaborate and work for the betterment of the environment and our economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out.
And there is a meeting with Marine Fisheries Commission that has been rescheduled from the snow in Kitty Hawk.
A February meeting after that in Washington.
Okay. Thank you. That's all that I have signed up. Is there anybody who got here after we took these that would like to speak?
My name's David Lake. I live on Backwoods as well, 555, and I don't have a whole lot more I can add, but I'd like my name added to the list.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I will close public comment, and we will move on. Our next item on the agenda is administrative reports, and I will turn it over to our county manager.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Madonna Stafford here with Carr Riggs and Ingram, and she will provide a presentation on our audit.
Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. I'm Madonna Stafford with Carr Riggs and Ingram. I'm in our New Bern office and was in charge of the county's audit again this year. First, just thank you so much for allowing me to be here with you tonight to go over the results of your June 30th, 2024 audit. I always like to start off just by reminding everyone what we were engaged to do and what our objectives were. First, and possibly most important, was to perform a financial audit over the financial statements as a whole, and then issue an opinion on whether those financial statements are materially correct. We did connect, conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards, and I'm pleased to say that we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for June 30th, 2024. So, essentially, this means it was a clean opinion, and we found nothing materially wrong. For reference purposes, you'll find our audit opinion letter on pages 18 through 21 of your audit reports. And then our second objective was to perform a compliance audit over all of your major federal and state programs and express an opinion on whether the county complied with all direct and material compliance requirements for those grant awards. For the county, in very simple terms, a major federal program is determined by expending $750,000 or more within that grant program for the year. And for fiscal year '24, the county had one major federal program, and that was medical assistance. Typically, this is the largest program within the county, and we normally do audit that every year. And then on the state side, in very simple terms, again, a major state program is determined by expending $500,000 or more within the grant program. For fiscal year '24, the county had two major programs that we tested. Those were E-911 fiscal year 2023B grant program, and then the state aid to airports. I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified opinion on compliance over all of your major federal and state programs for the year. So, basically, this means that we didn't find any compliance issues, no deficiencies, and no question costs to be reported within those grant programs for the year. For reference purposes, our report on the major federal programs is on pages 226 through 228, and then the state audit opinion report is on 229 through 231 of your audit reports. Moving on, I want to spend just a couple of minutes and point out a few of your financial highlights for the year to recap. Your net position for the county in total increased about $37.7 million for fiscal year 2024, and your ending net position for the year was $313,898,035. This is about $18 million better than what we saw in fiscal year 2023, with the largest increases here coming from your property taxes at about $9.5 million, and then your investment earnings at another $6.4 million increase for the year. Most of your other revenue streams for the year, like your state shared revenues, your sales tax, your occupancy taxes, those kind of things, those stayed pretty flat this year. So, no real changes there to report. Looking at your expense side, your total expenses for governmental activities decreased about $4.2 million in fiscal year '24, with your largest decrease being in the education function. All of this information will be on Exhibit 2, which is page 38 and 39 of your audit report Next, let's just take a minute and look at your general funds performance as well. Your general fund fund balance increased about $10.4 million this year. That will be on page 42, Exhibit 4 of your audit report. Your fiscal year '24 revenues increased about $10.6 million this year. And again, your largest increases there was your property taxes and your investment earnings, which we just spoke about. Expenditures in the general fund increased about $9.6 million, and that's very much in line with those increase in your revenues. The largest increases by function for your expenditures was public safety at $3.8 million, and then debt service at $4.6 million, which is due to the new debt, school debt that was brought on this year. So, we're looking at the general fund. I do want to just mention your ratio of your unassigned fund balance to total expenditures. This is one of the most important measures of financial health that the state monitors, and they do keep a very close check on that year after year. For the county, your unassigned fund balance at year end was $41,704,819, and it represents about 60% of your general fund expenditures for the year. For comparison, last year's ratio was 51%, so you do see a sizable increase in reserves for this fiscal year. Really, what this number is telling you is that the county has enough reserves on hand to pay your bills and operate with no new revenues coming in for about seven months of a fiscal year. For comparison purposes, the LGC recommends that this unassigned fund balance be at least 20%, and the average within the state is 39%. So, Currituck County is doing very well as far as demonstrating financial health and then building some reserves year after year as well. Next, we'll just spend a minute and look at your business type activities, which are on Exhibit 8, page 49 of your audit report. Your business type activity net position overall increased $3.4 million for fiscal year '24. Total operating revenues for the year increased about $300,000, so those were actually fairly flat. Expenditures in total increased $2.4 million, which offset this slight revenue increase. And then your largest increase on your expenditures, again, was in your landfill expenditures. There's been a lot of growth in that area. Nonoperating revenues for the year, those increased 1.2 million, and again, that's going to be related to your investment earnings, and we've seen increases similar to this across the board. So, just a good sign of economic recovery there. Next, I do want to look at the property tax collections on page 200 of your audit report. Your overall levy for the year increased about $9.8 million, and this is due to increases both in your property tax base as well as the rate increase for last year. Tax collation rate remained very strong at 99.14%. For comparison, the fiscal year '23 rate was 99.27%. So, you can see we have a very good trend going there. Just as a final note, I do want to point out and discuss the performance indicator worksheet that we send in every year with the audit to the LGC. This was put in place probably about three years ago to kind of monitor trends within all counties and municipalities and to point out areas that they feel are weak and need to be monitored. The county did have a performance indicator for the water and sewer capital asset condition ratio this year. We had it last year as well, which was the first year that was added to the list of performance indicators. And really, what that's saying is the LGC wants to see your useful remaining life for your infrastructure assets over your business type to be at least 50% or more. The county for fiscal year '24 was at 43%. Last year is at 44%, so just a slight decline there. I do know the county has several infrastructure-type projects going on there with the business type activities, so I do think this will get remedied in the next, you know, year or two as these projects are brought on board and that sort of thing. So, there has been some progress done to get this back up to where the state wants to see it. County also did have a performance indicator for late audit submission this year. By state statute, the audit is due by October 31st every year and then has a 30-day grace period. Unfortunately, the audit was submitted a little bit later this year. We got it in in January, just due to some unforeseen absences within the finance staff that really could not be avoided. Both of these items will require response to the LGC just going through your corrective action plan and how you intend to address these in the future. I've gone through all of this with the finance officer, as well as she has a copy of the form, and she will compose a response to the state, have you guys review it, sign it, and submit it, and just kind of let them know how you're going to be correcting these Other than that, we had no concerns or internal control deficiencies to be reported this year. Things were very standard. Everything ran very smooth again this year. I would like to thank just the finance office staff, social services, really everybody that contributes to getting us information, answering questions, and being responsive to our requests. If there are any questions or anything that maybe I have skipped over that you would like to discuss, please let me know. I'm happy to take questions.
See if I have questions for Ms. Stafford?
I just have one. There is an error on page 16.
Okay.
On the elected officials, county officials. It looks like you got everybody new listed, but you have the wrong register of deeds listed.
Okay.
And my name is spelled wrong.
Oh, and a misspelling of Vice Chair Selena Jarvis.
It's fine. Well, we will certainly make note of that and make sure we get that corrected. I apologize.
It's fine. Well, thank you. If there are no questions, I appreciate your company and what you do. We do appreciate that. I will note for anyone in the audience and those listening, we do have our financial performance indicators of concern response in the agenda packet, so if you want to take a look at that, it is in the agenda packet. So, thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Okay, our next agenda item is new business and the adoption of the legislative agenda, and I will turn that over to our county manager for an explanation of the process.
Sure. Thank you. So, for consideration tonight, you have the, your legislative agenda for the '25, '26 biennium. These priorities represent your priorities in Raleigh with the North Carolina General Assembly and your interests, the county's interests in Raleigh with the General Assembly. Our lobbying firm, Ward Smith, came in January and held a work session with you all to revise our prior year's legislative agenda and to discuss new goals and priorities, and that is what you have before you this evening. I'll go ahead and highlight the items that are new. So, under appropriations priorities, the final bullet, the seek funding for highway safety study for North Carolina 168, 158 corridor, and shared use pedestrian and bicycle pass along North Carolina 168 in Moayak and 158 in Grandi is a new item. Then, under the policy priorities, is the sixth bullet, working collaboratively with local government stakeholders to seek revisions to recent changes to the state's downzoning law that were imposed by session law 2024-57. The following item, raise awareness within state government about potential risks coming from beyond the state's northern border to Corey's Ditch and Knott's Island. And then the final two items are also new. The first is to seek a ballot referendum to modify the mode of election of the county Board of Commissioners and alter voting district boundaries, as well as to seek a ballot referendum to alter the local Board of Education structure to a partisan board.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody want to comment or discuss any of these? I would like to say something about looking at your tier ranking with what's going on in Washington. If the educational department is done away with at the federal level and the money starts coming to the state, it's very important that that tier ranking changes because right now, you know what we get.
I think the last discussion we had with Senator Hennig is that they weren't going to change the formula, but they were looking at, unless I'm wrong on that, then we're going to change it, but they were going to look at, they're changing some of the, I guess, some of the input that they use in it, though. Is that, was that incorrect, or I thought that's what I understood.
So, I don't believe that a new bill has been reintroduced in this session. I would have to go back and review, but the bill that was introduced in last session was recommending a study bill for the tier system.
And that would be the population component is what mostly is concerning, comparing our population to Wake County and Mecklenburg County specifically.
Correct.
I think that's the concern there.
Yes, that criteria was removed from the formula many years, or not many, several years ago, which led us to become a tier three county. That's correct.
And one of the other things that has been on there for the last three years is, of course, near and dear to a lot of our hearts, including Senator Hennig, is the asking for a second diploma track. This track is hand in hand with the community colleges initiative called NC Promise and would allow students to take the required math at the community college level with the track that they're seeking in lieu... the track that they're seeking in lieu of the requirement of Math 3 and Math 4 specifically. And I know we met as a small committee, both staff and administration from College of the Albemarle, staff and administration from the schools, staff and administration and board members from the county, and Senator Hennig, and at the time Chairman O'Neill was our representative, and all of us came to the conclusion that this is what is necessary to help our students achieve. And that's, that was on our legislative agenda for the last two years, and I look forward to working with Bobby Hennig and others to try to make that path happen.
And I'd just like to comment on that as well. I mean, it's important that we have alternate pathways. I did, I went to the state and I met with the school division up there to talk about this issue, and there was agreement that their hands were tied at the time, but there was agreement that, you know, when I was in high school, I went through four years of rigorous math because I loved it, but in my HVAC business, I don't use a bit of it in there, very little of it. And so, I mean, I think we have to have alternate paths, and there was a lot of agreement with that, is that different types of math for different careers is what's needed out there.
Any other items anybody wants to comment on?
We, we did invite Senator Hennig to come and talk with us. Have we reached out to Representative Goodwin and invited him to come and talk with us about our legislative priorities? Or can we do that?
Sure. So our lobbying team with Warden Smith certainly has that relationship with Representative Goodwin, and as we move forward beyond the adoption of this agenda, we will reach out to Representative Goodwin as well.
I'd love for him to come to Currituck. I mean, he is representing us in the House. I think face-to-face is good sometime, best. If there's no more discussion, I will take a motion.
So moved.
All right. All right, all in favor of the 2025-2026 state legislative agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a letter of support, establishment of a permanent state-level program to remove abandoned and derelict vessels from coastal waters. I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. The North Carolina Coastal Federation reached out and requested the county's support for the creation of a state-level program with permanent authority and resources to reduce, prevent, and remove abandoned and derelict vessels from coastal waters. And so in tonight's agenda packet, there is some background information about the removal of abandoned and derelict vessels, and also a template letter of support for the program. So this really comes in response to several storm events over the last few years where the Coastal Federation, the Wildlife Resources Commission, the Division of Coastal Management, and local governments have worked together to develop a partnership and a way to address these abandoned and derelict vessel issues that we have in our coastal waterways. They, ultimately, the Wildlife Resources Commission is charged with removal of these vessels, but it's typically in response to an emergency, and they have found that they don't have the proper authority or funding to implement the program. So through this partnership, they've developed some recommendations and the, overall, that they are requesting that the General Assembly establish a permanent program here in North Carolina and reoccurring funding for that program.
Okay. Any questions for?
I just want to say that that's a great idea. I mean, I can pick a couple spots I know from, in some of our waterways where we have issues, and we get calls and complaints to our dispatch about it, so it's something now that we'll have a path forward to be able to move on. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions, then I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to pull out or discuss? If not, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The next item on the agenda are the commissioners' reports. I will start to my left and start with Ms. Rose.
Well, last week, I was able to attend the Social Services Board meeting. Air Social Services is there to help all of our citizens, all ages, with various needs, and they work hard to do a good job. I was also asked to help judge at the Regional FFA Federation event held last week, which was hosted by the CCHS FFA chapter at our Extension Center here in the county. Five counties participated. I was very impressed with our young people and our Currituck Chapter FFA. Several citizens from Air County volunteered to help with the judging. They needed lots of judges for creed, public speak-in, job interview, parliamentary procedure, tool identification. Many from within the community stepped up, and a big thanks to all of them for helping. While I was at the Extension Center, I did stop and take a look at their TV with the rolling ads, and for those of you that are not familiar with Air Extension Center, that staff provides so many opportunities for our citizens of all ages. Some of the examples that were flashing across the screen was growing, crafting, sipping medicine teas, fruit tree care and pruning. They have workshops. There's Medicare help available with a trained counselor. They have lots of things coming up for our youth, ages five to 14, such as a fishing day, a workshop with seeds, and kayaking at Merchant's Mill Pond. In addition to these events, the Extension Center offers scholarships, and they oversee the Backpack for Kids program, which sends food home with some of our children on weekends. So hats off to all those that are a part of that Extension Center staff.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rose. Mr. Payment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. As most of y'all know, I am the representative for Albemarle Regional Health's executive board, and our last meeting, we had last week, the end of the month, we had our audit report, and the Albemarle Regional Health had a very, very, very good audit, financially strong. They're doing well. They are concerned about some of the federal fundings, but we're keeping an eye on that. And there's been a lot of discussions through all the counties of how they can provide more healthcare opportunities throughout all the counties. And specific, I know the director there will be having a meeting with our county manager here very soon, and one of the topics will be discussions of how we can, or just brainstorming some ideas of bringing some healthcare, maybe a building or something down to the south end of the county, and even a roaming physician of some nature to work out of banks as well, too. So those are just some of the things going around with the Health Department. And as far as, and I also reside on the ABC Board, and just whether people like it or not, the sales, the alcohol sales have gone up. So evidently, people enjoy beverages more, which just means more, it's nonprofit, so the county gets a good portion written to them, so that just means the county's going to be getting some more ABC funds this year, so, which is a good thing. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McCord?
I've now sit on the FIAB board. Whoever would have thought a law enforcement officer would be on a fire day MS advisory board? But I've had two meetings in the last, what, four weeks? Like Mr. Mitchell did say, we had some very positive things come out of the last meeting where we save, figured out a way to save the county $36,000. Doesn't seem like a lot, but $36,000. It's for sets of turnout gear. I've now learned how much fire stuff costs, and it's like amazing how expensive some of that stuff is. But it's educational, a bunch of different things, just better, was a very productive meeting, like communications, it was very well attended. It was in Corolla. It's on the mainland one month, it's on Corolla the next month. Very active group. So like I said, a lot of good things to come for the county. We've talked about some stuff as that was spoken in here earlier, as they said, Mr. Hobbs and a couple of the other people from Backwoods area, which it's a shame that they can't use the Navy base, who always beats everybody there first in that area, but we can't use that as part of the ISO. Nothing much else. Like I said, hopefully the weather will break all the rain, the wet, the cold, the snow. I think everybody's tired of it, so ready for some sunnier days and warmer days. Baseball and all that good stuff's around the corner, so that's about it. Be safe.
Okay. And Commissioner Angel?
So if you don't know by now, I'm in the wrestling state tournament was last weekend. Congratulations, Jordan Tolliver, who placed sixth in the state from Currituck County. Also attended the Hunter's Feast. It's a, it's a good gathering out on Knott's Island that goes to benefit Hope Haven, which is a children's orphanage foundation in Virginia. So that was a good event. We got good weather for it. And for the record, my ball hit the boat for Commissioner McCord's.
Mine stayed in the boat, though, so just for sale.
All right, thank you. And I, like Commissioner Payment sits on the Albemarle Regional Health, I sit on the College of the Albemarle Board of Trustees. We also got our annual audit report, so if you want to hear more about audits, join some boards. Everybody gets to go through audits. But COA, I'm proud to announce, got a clean audit report as well, and I thank the staff there, as in our finance staff, too, for our clean report. I would like to thank our staff, specifically our planning staff, for our second retreat day on planning items on Wednesday, the 26th. It was a very problem-solving kind of day. I know there are people out there that think that the county will do everything they can to throw up roadblocks for any kind of business development or change, and that is simply not true. They worked tirelessly throughout the day to think outside the box and find a way to solve some of the major issues that arise in the county for lots of record, for family subdivisions, for all kinds of issues that they deal with. They are in the business of solving problems, not just in the business of saying no, and I want to commend them for their work. And thank you, too, to all of our staff, and especially you, Rebecca. It was a great day, and it was much needed. I think it was very productive. And finally, I'll mention again that it's March for Meals. This is the month-long celebration and the month-long public relations campaign for our Meals on Wheels program, which doesn't just serve meals Monday through Friday. It provides an outlet to let these homebound citizens know that they are connected and that they have someone putting eyes on them, and it is truly the best thing I do all month. It is incredibly rewarding, and I would once again challenge our commissioners to reach out to our senior services staff and take a day and see what that program's all about. Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, I will do the county manager's report. Ms. Gay?
Thank you. Just wanted to take a moment to welcome Angie Lotman to the county manager's staff. Angie is our new opioid program coordinator, so she will be taking over that position, and we're excited to have her onboard. Also wanted to point out a couple county events, and then an additional event. The office, excuse me, the Office of Congressman Don Davis is hosting a Veterans Mobile Office Hours and Veteran History Project on Wednesday, March 12th, at Cooperative Extension from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And our Veterans Services Officer, Rob Kane, will also be at that event. Also wanted to highlight a blood drive on Monday, March 17th, so the day of our next meeting, at the Judicial Center in courtroom C. And then a voter ID event that the Board of Elections is holding for photo IDs, and those are on two upcoming dates, Tuesday, March 18th, at the Barco Library from 9:00 to 4:00, and Wednesday, March 19th, at the Moyac Library from 9:00 to 4:00.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Morgan, do you have a county attorney's report?
No report.
Okay, thank you.
What was the date for the veteran event?
It is Wednesday, March 12th.
All right. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And now I will call us to order for the Tourism Development Authority. On the agenda, we have budget items. Do you have anything to add about the budget items? If for anyone who wants to look at them, they are on Page 37.
Move for approval.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate your attendance. Have a great evening and safe travels home.
Thank you.